The response, a review project update in response to the Dundas Street renaming petition. Deputy Mayor Min and Wong held the item down. So do we have questions to staff? Please put your name on the screen. Counselor Holiday.
Thank you, Speaker. Through you, I think, to the city manager, could you describe the public consultation process leading up to this report?
Sure. Through the clerk, the details of it were certainly laid out in our September report that council approved. We did go out and procure the services of someone who specializes in working with equity deserving groups. Certainly, the effort that was made began certainly with those leadership, the individuals that have clear voices in both the indigenous and black communities, those that are recognized as leaders of those two groups, certainly talked to BIAs, certainly attempts were made to engage with citizens whose address does contain Dundas. All of that was undertaken.
Could you tell me a little bit about the numbers of people that you engaged with? Consulted, I'm sorry, forgive me, the words matter, consulted.
Sure, I would have to refer to Cheryl Blackman. If Cheryl could help me with that, please.
Good afternoon. And through the chair, we had a set of discovery sessions and they included approximately 25 people that were representing the communities that the city manager has spoken about.
How many general public were consulted?
So through the speaker, through the chair, Counselor Holiday, those folks who are consulted are members of the general public?
Okay. Was a public opinion poll done, as laid out in the report?
Through the chair, Deputy Mayor Holiday, the actual pieces of deep consultation that are laid out in the report are being proposed and recommended as part of the next steps depending upon the outcomes of today's meeting.
Okay, so leading into this report, there has not been deep consultation with the general public, other than the 25 that you mentioned?
So through the chair, Deputy Mayor Holiday, we have been speaking to those members of the community that are in fact the most impacted by the potential of a name change. Those are members of the black and indigenous communities trying to center and focus on those voices. We have also been responding to and working with consultant, as indicated in the report, who has expertise to help to guide our thinking on this work. And we are planning in our next steps to do a deep and thorough consultation with Torontonians on the ways that we move forward towards determining a new name.
So the last report last year has lots of language in it, broader community, just kind of reading snippets here. Public process, public process comes up a few times, including in the actual petition itself. I just wondered, did someone change their mind or change the methodology from what was laid out, at least the intention of what was laid out in the previous report to what we got today?
If I can, through the clerk, I think as pointed out, we did procure expertise in dealing with equity deserving groups. And so we certainly, based on their experience and their advice, we took the approach that we would start with the populations that were most directly affected by the whole renaming exercise. So, and I think part of the reason, and this is why I think, you know, after a decision is made, to go with a more broader communication, there was certainly some concern expressed by the consultant about what the effect of broader engagement might have at this particular time, meaning that it could result in a discussion or a debate that would maybe further jeopardize the populations that are already been affected. So that was certainly a consideration that staff took seriously. And so I think-
So why didn't you ask the consultant to handle it? And that's what they do, right? They deal with difficult issues.
That was the last question.
Well, certainly, not only consultants, but staff deal with difficult issues. And it wasn't so much about how we would feel or how the consultant would feel, it'd be about the population in Toronto, how they would feel about, you know, their issue, their concern about, you know, historical figure who, whose activities clearly worked against them. And so I think, you know, when you're trying to address very sensitive equity issues, I think you have to be very mindful of the audience that could be affected by such an approach. So that was certainly some, I think, good advice that we've given by the consultant. And it's not to suggest that once a decision is made on this matter that there won't be more communication, which of course there will be. But, and it's important to note as well that the BIAs were in fact engaged as well. So don't think for a second that those stakeholder groups were not brought to the table and the options that were given direction to go take to the stakeholder groups were shared with them. And so they confirm what you see in front of you today.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Min and Wong, questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to ask any questions with the previous Counselor Holiday's questions. There was a woman who was answering questions and the first question, the question was on the line was who participated, who was engaged in these consultations from the general public?
Madam Speaker, point of order, please.
Point of order.
Madam Speaker, with great respect through you, the deputy mayor has just referenced a staff member as a woman who was answering questions.
Only because I don't know her name.
Let me just finish the point, let me just finish the point. If the deputy mayor does not know the staff member's name, the deputy mayor may wish to inquire the name. Her name is Ms. Blackman, Cheryl Blackman, who's the acting general manager of economic development. And Speaker, I would ask that courtesy to be offered to our staff.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, it was no, I mean, Madam Chair, there was no slight or nothing, I just didn't know her name. So I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
So anyway, Mrs. Blackman referred, okay. Ms. Blackman said, Counselor Holiday was asking about consultation and Ms. Blackman, I believe, said that black and indigenous community was engaged. And then Counselor Holiday probed a little bit more and asked who from the general public was engaged. And I didn't get, other than the people in the black and indigenous community, and I didn't get a clear answer on that. So I was wondering if she might sort of explain or describe, other than the black and indigenous community, what consultation took place with the general public?
Through the chair, and good afternoon, Deputy Mayor Min and Wong, happy to clarify, hoping you can hear me okay. The folks who were engaged in the consultation were indigenous community, black community, who were the most impacted by the concern raised by Dundas Street, included, as the city manager had mentioned, is our BIA members. There were members of resident associations, there were also some members of the black business professionals and the entrepreneurial community engaged to be part of those discovery sessions. And really, the idea was to speak with them more about what is potentially being proposed as a way forward. And as City Manager Murray pointed out, we wanted to make sure that through those discovery sessions, we were hearing from the folks who are most deeply impacted by potential question of a name change.
So just to, I mean, I need to repeat the question because I know you answered very fully about the black and indigenous communities participating. And that's, you know, that's great. And we understand that, you know, as you said, that they are impacted greatly. But my question was actually, and I think my guess is Counselor Holiday was trying to get to this point too. The general public need to be consulted on this. And it seems to me from your answer that there didn't seem to be an in-depth consultation with the general public. So what efforts did you make to consult, notwithstanding all those people and groups that you mentioned, what efforts did you make to consult with the general public?
Through the chair, Deputy Mayor Min and Wong, the report outlines an approach that is about first presenting and hearing from the folks most deeply impacted by the concern. And the folks that I mentioned, the communities that I mentioned, the general public that I mentioned, are our black communities, indigenous communities, BIAs, resident associations. And in the second phase of the work, there is a detailed plan that includes a consultation with a broader swath of Torontonians that will include work that is done through survey, through communications strategies that will actually move out to, you know, more people engaged. There's a variety of engagement opportunities being proposed as the second phase of this work. So we presented that to you as the first phase of the work.
So you haven't done that broader consultation? You probably do, but you haven't done it.
Last question, last question.
Yeah, that's my last question.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Carroll, questions?
Thanks, Madam Speaker. Just a quick question. I am wondering, I have before me a report that says that even including the city assets, this is going to cost $5 to $6 million. Why am I hearing in the media, particularly AM Talk Radio, 22 million? Is that a part of the executive committee I missed?
It's not a number that you can attribute to us. So our numbers are not just those general numbers, including contingency, there's a breakdown as to how we arrived at those numbers. So the 22 million-
Yes, it's quite itemized here and it includes the Dundas stations, does it not?
Right, it does. I mean, it interfaces with highways and subways and other roads. So I mean, there are, plus there are the public spaces themselves. So the 22 million is not a number that's coming from us.
Okay, so in my travels with AM Talk Radio, I could call that pure fiction from a staff standpoint?
You could call it pure something.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fletcher, questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. When this item was at executive, I had asked a question about when the Sir John A. McDonald Plaza was named. Actually, it was an attempt originally to name all of Union Station, Sir John A. McDonald Station, and then became simply the plaza and a plaque. And I have had-
Oh, sorry, I was trying to get Stephen.
Sorry, Denzel, you're online.
Deputy Mayor, you have your mic on.
Steven Holiday.
Sorry.
Sorry, I hope you stopped my time there.
Yeah, yeah, don't worry about that. Go ahead.
Thank you. So just, I lost my train of thought, but when we were having that discussion, I raised that at executive, asked how that had happened, read the motion, and there was to be a consultation with BIA, the neighborhood, there was no indication to have a consultation with the Indigenous Affairs Committee at the time. And it was a very small consultation. I don't know who's going to answer that because it was done through the partnership office, I got the answer back. So it'll either be Ms. Sholi or Ms. Blackman or the partnership office. I wonder if you could hold that while they figure out who it's going to be.
Speaker, Counselor Fletcher, Menji will be answering the question.
Thank you. Yes, could you please, the motion was to have a very clearly identified number of people to have a consultation with, correct? Yes or no?
It was, and through the speaker, and thank you for the question, Counselor Fletcher. So the-
Now, can I just ask the rest of my questions, please? So there was a list, could you please read the list, who it was?
I think the motion was to request consultation with BIAs, with the local councillors, with the local community. I think those were the primary ones in terms of being able to do that.
I think there was only three, those were the three. The Indigenous Affairs Committee was not listed there, was it?
It was not.
And we understand that's a very big deal right now with the Indigenous Affairs Committee or Indigenous population in Toronto across the country. So did that consultation actually take place with Counselor McConnell and prior, and the BIA and anyone in the community? I understand it never took place, is that correct?
My understanding is that there was consultation with Deputy Mayor Min and Wong and with Counselor McConnell. There was an online survey that was conducted at that time, which did engage local businesses and the general public as well. That consultation was carried out by Heritage Toronto at that time, that's my understanding.
So that wasn't that broad of a consultation then, I would have to say. So let's just, I just thought, there was a petition came in about Dundas. City council said, please go back and let us know what to do. Now we have a report that says go out and consult in this way and come back, and here's the cost. If we looked at what happened around Sir John A. McDonald, one councillor brought a letter to executive, it went to council, there was no, and then it was simply voted on, correct?
At the time of voting, there was some consultation that had been carried out by Heritage Toronto that spoke to the recommendation about not renaming the whole station, but renaming the plaza.
Well, that was between executive and the city council meeting. So there was only a small window. Somebody called Heritage Toronto and they said, don't name the whole station. So city staff recommended against naming the whole station. But in light of that, and I might not move a motion today, but would any naming of such a controversial figure, because it was a very controversial vote, the local councillor opposed it, as we all know, and was defeated, her motion to not do it was defeated, that was former Deputy Mayor McConnell. Would such a so-called consultation be allowed today without engaging the indigenous community, without engaging larger numbers of people or having a timeframe going from a motion at executive to a city council vote? Would that be a standard of practice for the city today?
Through the speaker councillor, I think in looking at the recommendations and the work that's happening, no, I think the consultation would have needed to be broader than it was at that time. And it would have included black and indigenous communities in that in a proactive way.
And that didn't happen there? And has anybody been in touch about whether or not this is a wise thing to maintain, anything to do to sort out the issue of Sir John A. McDonald, such as another plaque that might explain his role in residential schools and his attitude towards indigenous people at that time? Has anyone considered that?
Last question.
Counselor, they have not been in touch with my office, but we understand that that conversation is happening in the community. And we would anticipate that through the review of Dundas, that the issue of other spaces and places would come up in terms of the city needing to look at what we've named, how we've named, and what we might need to change.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Grimes, question?
Madam Speaker, I guess this to Mr. Murray, I see like the business with the name Dundas, that they could apply through the FASOT program for funny change of name. But, you know, from my experience, that money gets snapped up pretty quickly. Do we think there's enough money for these businesses to be able to obtain that money to have the name changed on their signage? Do we have to wait till the next cycle after they apply again?
Right. I mean, we do have some time before, A, that we land on a name and then we actually institute the name changing process. I don't think in our report we're requiring businesses to change the names, notwithstanding the fact that, you know, we as a public organization believe the name should be taken off of our signs. We do at this point believe that there is enough funds, would be enough funds for businesses to apply. So I think if we felt differently, we would have recommended additional funds be added to the budget.
So we've got the number of businesses and properties on the stretch of Dundas, the number of properties, private properties, do we have that number, how many businesses there are, their houses, apartments?
I think we're over 90,000 residences that carry the Dundas address, and I believe it was, Cheryl, you'll have to help me in terms of total number of businesses. I think it was around 60 that carry the name Dundas and then-
But no, but it's one of the total number of businesses and residents on that, 90,000 is that the number?
Right, through the speaker, through the speaker, Counselor Grimes, there was 4,500 businesses and there are 60 with Dundas in their name.
Okay, but I just want, everyone, Dundas, how many businesses, residents, apartment buildings are on that? Is it 90,000?
Through the speaker, Counselor Grimes, there's 95,000 residents along the strip, 4,500 businesses and 60 that carry the name.
Okay, so would they have to, they got a survey for their building, they're coming in, they're selling their building, their survey says Dundas on it, would they, like, what's the cost for them to change that? If somebody came with an application and they have their survey with Dundas on it, you know, with the planning department would take Dundas, they have to change it, what's the cost for them to change their addresses over to a new street name? Do we have those numbers?
Through the speaker, Counselor Grimes, there is, we've determined from investigation that there is no cost, the survey is not impacted.
Survey would not have to be changed?
No, sir, we validated that and there is no impact on the survey.
Okay, and, you know, I know Dundas goes through many municipalities. Have we talked to Mrs. Sog, Oklahoma Burlington, Hamilton, do they know what they're doing?
Through the speaker, Counselor Grimes, we have been speaking to colleagues in other municipalities. However, we are very clear what their determinations are regarding next steps, it's entirely up to their own residents and their own council. And we are focusing our attention squarely on Toronto and city council in the city of Toronto.
But do we have any indication they're going to bring this forward to make changes? We have no indication at this time?
Through the clerk, we have no indication from any, as to any formal change that they're considering. Although, I mean, recognizing that our report is relatively new, what effect that may have on other councils really remains to be seen.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Pasternak, question?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to staff, when this item first came, one of my questions was could we rename the square but keep the street? And city manager said, everything's on the table. I read this report now and there's very little on the table, except for a complete overhaul of municipal assets and private businesses and so forth. What caused the change? And in the same question, I would say I was always looking for sort of a way to solve this with the least division possible. We have a ceremonial naming policy. And when I brought the, when I wanted to rename University Avenue Queen Street as a request of the black community in honor of Nelson Mandela, we looked at the ceremonial naming policy of the city and we named, we did a ceremonial option. And I'm just wondering what, why there's no middle ground on this, why it's a zero-sum game? It's either all in or nothing. And whether this Quake Lab, who you hired, led us in that direction?
If I can, I'll start, Cheryl, and you can certainly follow anything that I miss. Counselor, you'll recall back in September, we had identified four options that we would be taking out in terms of the work we'd be doing, certainly with indigenous, black and other groups. Those four options included do nothing, two options that you might consider are the middle ground, and then the fourth option would be the removal of the name. I think when you look at the, you know, the work of the professional historians that have been engaged in scholarly work, it's pretty clear as to who Henry Dundas was and what role he played in the abolition, abolition story of slavery. And I think to those that were given that information and were given the options that were available, they chose certainly that renaming was appropriate. And renaming of not just our public monuments and spaces, but our streets as well. And you may recall as well that there was an estimate in the range of, I think, $4 to $5 million that was reflected in that report, which has been updated in this report. So those were the options that we agreed we would take to them, and that's what we did. And asking them to, you know, to recommend to us what it is that they thought was appropriate to move forward with. And it was clear, clarity, including the BIAs that we were consulting, that the name change was warranted, given the historical figure that Henry Dundas was.
So you hired a firm called Quake Lab, I don't really know who they are. I guess they're, this is what they're involved in. And they clearly, if you look at their corporate mission, they were not going to look at any middle ground. They repeated on their social media platforms, the comments of someone, I guess they spoke to, who said you wouldn't allow Hitler Street to remain. Now Hitler started a war that killed 75 million people. Do you think Henry Dundas and Hitler really are a missing link?
The speaker, that's a very interesting question. I'm sure to the indigenous and black population, certainly the people we talked with, it is offensive to both groups that a street would be named that covered over what was historically an indigenous travelway. That in itself is offensive. And then, of course, the role of Henry Dundas enslaving people and perpetuating it for 15 years and affecting over 600,000 people directly, not to mention his policies or the policies he supported in Central America and how that affected indigenous people there. These are atrocities, you know, to suggest that atrocities in the millions versus atrocities in hundreds of thousands are both, you know, sinister and are, I think, you know, deplorable. And I think the options that Quake Lab presented, which were all for, it wasn't them that chose it. It was based on the feedback, if you will, the opinions of those that were, this matter was discussed with, that they reflect back to us. So it wasn't them steering it as much as it was them bringing the options to the table and asking people who are most directly affected what they thought.
Thank you. Counselor, sorry, that was your last question. Counselor Perks?
Thank you, Speaker. I'm just looking for a little bit of insight on what we're doing to establish a process for the many other streets and civic spaces that have been identified over the years. Can you just give me a picture of what's going to happen going forward for those other issues?
Cheryl? Through the speaker, and thank you, Counselor Perks, we are intending to begin a series of consultations that I mentioned earlier. And I also just want to just reiterate for council that part of the process in getting to our Quake Labs and discovery sessions included reviewing 400-plus academic works, as well as looking very deeply at the expertise of the historians who are peer-reviewed in this area. So certainly, as we go forward, the plan is to continue to look at and do engagement with Torontonians that includes surveys, includes public meetings. It will include opportunities for an advisory committee to be struck that will help us to think about potential names. It will center the folks most impacted by that and include other diverse community members in consideration of the next steps towards a possible naming. And these things together will be brought back to council in Q2 of 2022 for consideration before any further next steps are taken on a potential new name.
Okay, and there will be arranged, I mean, some things will be relatively simple compared to some other things, right? So you're going to bring us back a framework that deals with smaller matters, medium-sized matters, larger matters, and there'll probably be different tests for each.
Through the speaker, Counselor Perks, absolutely. The commemorative framework that's being proposed is really not a one-size-fits-all approach. It is intended to be something that is looking at the different street lengths, the history, of course, that is validated by scholars in the area. It will actually not be all about one kind of outcome. There will certainly be consideration to multiple outcomes, and it is not a one-size-fits-all perspective or approach.
Okay, and how would I direct members of my community who want to give advice on what that framework should be?
Through the speaker, Counselor Perks, we will actually be reaching out to Torontonians in a fulsome communications plan that will indicate clearly to all who want to be involved how they might go ahead and do that. And that will happen as a next step in this work. We will be communicating on social media, we'll be using channels to let folks know how best to reach out to us, and we'll also be communicating the steps that are part of the process to move forward.
And if I can, I'm sorry, no, I was just going to add to that. We'll make sure all members of council are aware of when that notification's happening so that you can work it through your channels that you have in your community so that everyone will have a good idea of when this all starts.
Could you give me just a ballpark of when you imagine it starting?
Absolutely. Through the speaker, Counselor Perks, we are anticipating to begin engaging in the fall. We have timelines that are being set out in the report and that are currently embedded in the report that are currently public, that are giving you the overarching kind of high-level milestones that need to be hit. So we expect to be working with Torontonians in the fall, in the early part of the fall.
Thank you so very much.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you very much. And Counselor Perks actually took my question, but I don't fully comprehend here the thread forward. Can you clearly, just for the purposes of our residents, lay out how you are facilitating the remaining streets on your list? Because it sounds like you're going to come back and say rename them all. Is that the plan, city staff will be saying, we're going to rename all these streets that you've listed on your appendix? The secondary document you released?
Sure. Sorry about that. Through the speaker, Counselor Robinson, my screen was frozen, I was just trying to get it back, so my apologies.
Okay.
In terms of the process to move forward, our intention is not to propose renaming all of the streets. And in fact, at this particular time, city staff are aggregating and pulling together lists and doing the historical research on those streets. So there will be a case-by-case review of any streets that propose a concern for residents. And we're going to try to, through this commemorative framework development, present you with a plan that would address how those streets would be considered. But at this particular juncture, it is not city staff's proposal to arbitrarily go ahead and propose renaming of 60 streets. We are planning to do research and to bring back recommendations that will come and flow through the commemorative framework that's being developed.
So what would that look like? Would there be some independent body that would be reviewing the information that's being gathered, the historical information? Is that kind of how this would frame up? It's just not clear to me.
Through the, through the chair, Counselor Robinson, the intention is for us to work with and develop an advisory committee that is a group of independent experts who can support city staff, who have the ability to also conduct research, because we do have historians and other city staff experts within our midst. We have been partnering with Toronto Public Library and other group of experts to ensure that we are, you know, doing this research in a way that is the most open approach possible. And we would then provide and produce recommendations for council for consideration regarding the commemorative framework, coming from feedback from the advisory group, feedback from these consultations that we're going to do in public, and from survey results to be able to inform a recommendation to council.
As to the city manager, that's helpful. This seems piecemeal what's before us today. Why has this been pulled out of this process that you're now proposing and developing a framework? Why are we then debating this today? I just want some clarification around that.
Sure, through the chair, you'll recall back in, I think it was August, the petition was presented to the city in particular. I believe Mayor Torrey had asked me to come back with a report as to how we might deal with the renaming of Dundas. So that's where the whole journey began. And we laid out in that report that we would consult in the manner which we did on the name and of course, bringing historical information to the table so we're clear on who Henry Dundas was. So we did that. And as well, we had talked about in that report, the need to start to turn our mind to the approach that we have historically been using for naming streets and monuments and suggested, I believe, at that time that we needed to start to rethink how we might, moving forward, do naming or renaming. And so what we have for you today is an approach that we now want you to understand and approve so that we can go ahead and implement that approach. But at the same time, come back with the answer about the name Dundas, should it stay, should it stay with some conditions or should we remove it? Which obviously, we're recommending that we remove. So I can appreciate why you use the term piecemeal, but I think it's consistent with the methodology or the approach that we said we would lay out or we would carry out in September of last year.
But just to be clear again, that was very helpful also. But just to be clear today, what are we voting on today? There's a number of recommendations before us, but specific to the renaming of Dundas, what are we voting on?
To remove the name.
To remove the name. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Cute. Counselor Thompson?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Through you to the city manager. Mr. City Manager, you've expressed some information to us today regarding number of people who have been impacted by Dundas' decision and/or his delay with respect to the abolishing of slavery. You said, I think the number was, was it 500 or 600,000?
Well, we believe the number is north of 600,000.
That would be women, children and men who were involved?
Correct.
Right. There was a number that John Rawls and Soul gave us at committee, he indicated that another 800,000 people as part of this process died as a result of the Atlantic slave trade and also in Africa. Were you, did you hear that information at committee?
Yes, I was at committee and listened carefully to that presentation.
Right. And how does that stack up? How does that, you know, with respect to our value as a city? Would we want to celebrate someone, no matter what the period of time is, is that consistent with the values of the people of Toronto, the value of the city, the values as such?
Through the speaker, certainly in my estimation, no, very clearly in terms of what the model of the city is, very clearly in terms of the work that this council has done to support the indigenous and black population. It defies, let's just say, logic as to why you would continue to celebrate someone who doesn't deserve to be celebrated.
Now, the report that you have presented is a comprehensive report that has been peer-reviewed, is that correct? And what does that mean, that this information's been peer-reviewed?
As you know, Deputy Mayor, we are expected to make, you know, evidence-based decisions. Evidence matters. So whether it be evidence in a court of law or evidence in the public court of law, if you will. You know, we are dealing with professional historians engaged in scholarly work. So it's not about just opinion or anyone's opinion. It is work that is carried out by credentialed individuals. And as you know, from that executive committee, we did have a presentation by Dr. Mullin, who is an expert in this particular field. And I think he gave as clear an answer as to who Henry Dundas was, as well as we had presentations from other PhDs who specialize in this area of historical research.
So I guess the cost that was stated in the reports, 600,000, let's round it off at that. We had some 600, sorry, 6 million, some 600,000 people who were being impacted. I guess if I were to divide 600,000 to 6 million, I'd get $10. So are we talking about $10 a slave here in terms of what the value of those slaves were? Is that the worth? You don't have to answer that.
No, I think you're expecting me to.
Yeah, no, thank you very much for that. Now, there has been a lot of talk though with respect to the costs and the complication. I wonder if I can get transportation, maybe Ms. Gray could just speak to that, because I understand a large portion of the cost relates to the street renaming. Do we not have a sign shop that produces signs as well?
Through the speaker, we do. In fact, Deputy Mayor Thompson had a sign shop, and we've been working closely with the team to identify costs and also look at opportunities for managing those costs as we do replacements. So we've been very engaged and will continue to stay engaged.
Just go back to, I guess, Ms. Blackman. Ms. Blackman, as part of the research that's been done and the information that's been brought forward, would I be correct to assume and to say that during the period when Henry Dundas was the second most, I guess, powerful man in the United Kingdom, would I be correct to assume that there are many citizens who were opposed to slavery in the UK and elsewhere?
Through the speaker, Deputy Mayor Thompson, you would be correct to assume that there was definitely opposition to the slave trade during this period?
And would I also be correct in assuming that part of Dundas' effort was around military and economic sustainability for, I guess, his government and/or as he saw it, that by keeping the slaves, it would actually maintain military and economic might?
Through the speaker, Deputy Mayor Thompson, you are correct. And Dr. Stephen Mullin also spoke about this, and he spoke about the historic research of about at least nine other historical experts that speak very clearly about Henry Dundas' impact through this period of time, for your question.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Speaker. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Counselor Wong-Tam?
Yes, thank you very much. And through you, Madam Speaker, I want to have understanding about the subsequent process. So I understand that the vote before today is to proceed and go ahead and rename Dundas, and I know that you can put out some associated costs. But what about the subsequent process? There are 60 other streets, I think, that are on the potential review list. How is that going to play out?
Through the speaker, Counselor Wong-Tam, the intention of the working group is to begin to do additional research on the 60 names to consult much more deeply with the local residents of the city of Toronto. We want to be able to continue to hear from Torontonians in this process as we think about what possible names are for a newly named street. We do have an intention to consider, as City Manager Murray mentioned earlier, you know, what it looks like to look at assets versus street names and any other kind of scenarios that could be contemplated as we begin to move forward. There will be an opportunity for deep education and continued education throughout the process, because it's quite important to us that we are engaging in an educational piece of work as well as a piece of work that thinks about the naming of the street as we go forward.
Thank you very much, Ms. Blackman. So would you say that the process for the other 60 names is slightly different than the process for Dundas? Because Dundas came out of a movement with respect to Black Lives Matter, there was a huge protest, there was a petition that was tabled. Is that why Dundas is being accelerated and advanced in a very different manner than the other 60 names?
Through the speaker, Counselor Wong-Tam, I would suggest that, you know, the process is really being considered as we develop the commemorative framework. So I couldn't say that it's a different process at this particular juncture, but I can say is that the work that we are doing will inform and establish the process as we move forward.
Thank you. So, and just because, I'm just going to play the devil's advocate for a minute. If we have a petition that's forwarded to the city council that says 100,000 residents sign a petition suggesting that we don't rename- If we have a petition that's forwarded to the city council that says 100,000 residents sign a petition suggesting that we don't rename Dundas, would you take a similar approach? So therefore, you listen to the petitioners and you say, we're not going to go ahead. Is that how this works?
Sorry, City Manager Marie, do you want to take that one?
Oh, and again, you know, I think doing the research, understanding who the individual was that the street was named after a monument, I think that's where you begin to understand, you know, how to move forward, how to proceed. I mean, in this particular case, you know, the fact that you could have 100,000, you could have a million people suggest that, you know, notwithstanding, you know, the historical fact of this individual, that we should just keep the name anyway. Well, you know, what does that say to the Indigenous and Black community in this particular case? You know, I think we have, when we honor people, whether it be a monument or a park or a street, we should know something about who that person was. And the fact that, you know, as you say devil's advocate, someone would say, well, no, we think this was a great person, when in fact, you know, the historical evidence tells us otherwise. Then we have to make a decision, you know, do we honor people who don't deserve to be honored, regardless of how many people think that this was a great person? So the facts do matter. The methodology that we're using to understand the facts, I think, is really important. And I would say, you know, going forward, I mean, there may be other names that go beyond the 60, but I think what we need to do is make sure there's a good, solid framework that involves good research and discussions with people who are affected by these names and that we have a way to communicate the results of that. So I would not assume at this point that the 60 names means, you know, automatically 60 names will be changed. I think that is, that's putting the cart well before the horse, and I don't think that's wise at this point. But there is going to be a solid process, and that process is going to engage people that need to be engaged.
Thank you. I have one last question. So with respect to the proposal today, there's going to be a suggestion for partial cost recovery for affected businesses. Why not 100% full cost recovery for any businesses that are affected or anyone who's affected who has to change their address or perhaps the sign on their business?
That was your last question.
I'll start, and Cheryl, you can certainly, I mean, you know, in doing our homework for this report, I mean, one of the things that we did do is talk to Canada Post directly just to understand, you know, in a name change, how difficult is it going to be to get people their mail? And so it's much easier in light of the way technology is today for people to be able to still get their mail, notwithstanding that the name is changing. So the real effect, I think, on people is not as great as maybe some perceive. You know, in terms of, you know, those businesses that have Dundas in their name, I mean, we have made a provision for them that they can take advantage of. Other things that will have to change over time once we've established a name, I mean, it's like licenses or healthcare or whatever types of documentation we have that have the address on. Well, when you renew it, you just go with the new address. So, you know, all of those details we'll make clear when we're communicating, subject to what council decides here with this report. But, you know, we're not anticipating that the costs are as significant as maybe some perceive.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I have a question to the, I guess, to the city manager. The process, and because I've renamed a number of streets in my ward as well, commemorative actually, name change, is that you petition everyone that lives on a particular street, all the residents, all the businesses on the street, to consult with them? And being that we didn't do that with this, the businesses and residents that are on Dundas that are going to be impacted, would they be forced to change their address?
I mean, clearly, if we change the name of the street, it would be, I think, in their interest to reflect that in the letters or in the matters in which have the old name. And so certainly, I think, as we said already, I mean, if in the title of your business, if the word Dundas appears, I mean, we're not telling you that you have to change it. That's really your choice. So, you know, again, you know, it's one of those things that, you know, will, over time, give people lots of leeway to make the change when necessary, as painless as possible. And so that's something that we will be communicating, should council decide that the recommendations we put forward are approved.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Minin Wong to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I have a presentation.
Okay, just one, yes, just one sec.
Thanks.
Okay, I believe that you have a presentation, a video. So we'll put the video on.
This is a difficult debate, so I'll start by saying that while there may be disagreement among councillors, we all support fighting anti-black racism, and we all believe that slavery is an abominable practice with an atrocious disregard for human dignity and basic human rights. There are three issues I want to speak to today. First, Henry Dundas in the context of equity and inclusion. The staff report states that continued commemoration of Henry Dundas is in direct conflict with the values of equity and inclusion that the city of Toronto holds. Yet the historical record shows that Dundas appointed and avowed abolitionist John Ray Simcoe to be the first Lieutenant Governor of Upper Canada, which led to the first anti-slavery bill anywhere in the British Empire. Simcoe could not have done it without support from Dundas. Dundas stood up for black loyalists when governors of Nova Scotia and New Brunswick refused to respect their rights. He ordered the officials to give them the land and benefits to which they were entitled. Dundas supported bilingualism when he instructed the governor for Lower Canada to ensure that the Legislative Assembly in Quebec City conduct debates in French as well as English. These are significant examples of equity and inclusion, a criteria for deciding if continued commemoration of Dundas is appropriate. Yet the report didn't acknowledge them because its values principles were relevance to Toronto. I would argue that supporting abolition in Upper Canada, supporting black loyalists, and supporting language rights have always been relevant to Toronto. Secondly, I would like to address the issue of Dundas' amendment that the slave trade ought gradually to be abolished. Supporters of the name change say that Dundas was responsible for delaying abolition, implying he delayed in order to avoid. In fact, his plan didn't propose a delay. His plan was to immediately begin the gradual abolishment of the slave trade to be completed by 1800. He knew that only a gradual approach would get passed into law. Here's what Henry Dundas said from the transcripts of the British House of Commons debate in April of 1792. In this passage, honorable friends refers to the abolitionists. My honorable friends, however, have very well known that I have long entertained the same opinion with them as to the abolition of the slave trade. That is to say, he supports abolition. Later, he said, my opinion has been always against the slave trade. Speaking to the protectionists, he said, it is something anomalous that we, who are ourselves free, should carry a slave trade with Africa. And it is something anomalous also that we, who enjoy the full benefits of freedom, should never think of introducing cultivation in the West Indies by freemen and not by slaves. He then tried to persuade the protectionists it was in their own best interest to end the slave trade. In his speech, he's using every possible argument to pass abolition into law. Here, he refers to the challenges of changing the attitudes of the day. I'm far from flattering myself that anything I've said can at once totally eradicate prejudices that are deeply rooted and bring over men to a set of altogether new ideas. Finally, I'd like to address the standard of proof. This, our first proposal for renaming a street, will set the standard for subsequent proposals. So we must be diligent about the standard of proof. The staff report omitted context for Dundas' motion, that is, the previous resounding failures by the British Parliament to legislate abolition, which led to his moderate approach. It ignores evidence that Henry Dundas demonstrated values of equity and inclusion. It ignores the fact that Dundas' plan was not to delay the introduction of abolition. It was to introduce significant measures immediately and to see it completely abolished by 1800. The first year would have banned all British persons and ships from engaging in human trafficking with foreign territories. This report does not meet the standard of proof. In conclusion, as a city, we want people who are targets of racism to know it isn't tolerated. As a council, we need to be able to point to concrete actions that show real substantial action in fighting systemic racism. Renaming Dundas Street will not accomplish any of that, and it unjustly implicates Henry Dundas in the very thing he was fighting against. I will not be supporting this report today.
Commissioner Christie to speak.
All right. Well, thank you, Speaker, and thank you to our city staff for undertaking the due diligence and the research and the report that's here in front of us. These are, and we've heard it in the questions and we've heard it from the public, these are hard conversations. These are conversations that challenge ourselves and indeed our city, and they challenge us to listen deeply and also to reflect. And so when I reflect on our city and I reflect on our aspirational tagline, that diversity, our strength. I'm often reminded that diversity is and remains a fact, but it's inclusion, which is what we aspire to, which is and remains a choice. And it takes work to build an inclusive city, and that work must be reflected in our policy, but it also must be reflected in our names and symbols. And so, you know, building an inclusive city where everyone belongs, sure, it demands and requires us to act and implement policies that address discrimination and inequity. But it also requires us to reflect upon and ensure that the names of our streets, our monuments, of our statues, that they don't create barriers or divisions. And we've heard that the name of this street does, so let's reflect on that, and then let's act. And so when we talk as a city about equity, diversity, and inclusion as an agenda, that has to be embedded in everything we do. That's what an equity, inclusion, and diversity agenda is. It must be embedded in every action, in every policy, in every decision. And, you know, I will tell you, before getting into politics, I spent years living and working in post-apartheid South Africa. It was, I recall, the truth, the outcome of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, and it forced some really hard conversations in that country, which were necessary to move forward. And I think back to those years in my work because we're having a similar moment in reckoning in our own country where we're being forced to confront some hard truths, whether that's, as we talked about recently, in regard to the legacy of residential schools or in regards to the names of various institutions that exist here. And so, you know, I believe in understanding of history evolves, and we as a city must have the courage to evolve as well. And I think most importantly, in that evolution, we must be prepared not only to confront the names that may continue to foster discrimination, but the policies to ensure that we address inequity once and for all. And so I will be supporting this report. And thank you once again to the staff with their heart.
Thank you. Counselor Holiday to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. Thought a lot about this, and I have a motion, and it is a very simple one, that this be referred back to the city manager for further consideration. Members know that I spend a lot of time reading and thinking about these things, and I find myself with no choice but to place this motion after what I've seen today and what I've read. I want to talk about three general things about the report from the city manager. The first was just a reference to history. If you listen very, very carefully to the words that were put in the report and said today, you'll understand that words are important. Here's some words that were sent to us by someone by the name of Professor Emeritus Sir Thomas M. Devine, wrote to the mayor last week, and I think that was forwarded, that this is grievously erroneous decision on this important matter, which we may welcome back to haunt you in the future years, and is based on fatuous premises. And he is Sir William Fraser, Professor Emeritus, Scottish History and Paleography, and he was knighted for services to the study of Scottish history. So we can spend all day talking about the literature. But at the end of this, what the conclusion that I came to was that there isn't a single person on this planet that can come before us and tell us exactly what the intentions of Henry Dundas were. It's all opinion of different people. In fact, the only person that could tell us the answer to this died 210 years ago, and I'm very worried that this has become the standard at which we will judge whether we need to go and take chisels and hammers and take someone's name off of a wall or cut down a sign. And I'm fearful for the president that this is going to set. Just a little bit about the city's renaming policy, and I think that this was the tipping point for me forming my opinion. Council approved this document back in 2017. We did in 2015, and I don't even know the number of times before that. But the renaming of city streets under policy 6.1.3, highlighted right here, you get this off the internet. It says the documented support, including but not limited to petitions and support letters from at least 75% of the property owners that bought the street, that is to rename a street. And I looked at this and I said, why would we do that? Why would we give away the authority to rename a street to the people that live on it? And that's because it's bigger than this chamber. It's bigger than the 26 votes. It's bigger than the 26 members of council. The street name is literally and figuratively the identity of the people that live on the street. I live on Dundas. I work on Dundas. I grew up on Dundas. I own the Dundas laundromat. I eat at the Dundas Street Grill. I drink my coffee at the Dundas Cafe. And so why would we insert something like that into our renaming policy? It's because council understood the importance of this. 97,000 residents on the street, 4,500 businesses, 60 businesses within their name, that is literally the size, almost the size of a city ward. It's like renaming all the streets in a city ward. And so the last piece, the final piece, is public consultation. You'd think that we'd go out and speak to the public about this. And I asked questions about this today, and we've all seen this in the report, and we've listened to the answers. But we instructed the city manager to go and do this in the last report that came around. Public consultation comes up prominently, even comes up in the words of the petition and from the letters submitted by members of council, that public consultation occur. And we find out it was 25 people and some very, very select work done with the BIAs in the area. So, you know, there was this fear about rhetoric and racism and divisiveness coming forward, and that this somehow would affect, you know, the genuineness of the move. Well, you have to ask yourself the question, how do you know what people think and feel? Are you left to go read the comments and the electronic polls of newspapers? Or can you just look at the inputs that you get to your office, the angry calls and so on? You're left with wondering, is this divisive in the city? Is this not even supported? And perhaps that's the answer. It's not even supported, and that's why we don't see the information here. So you have to ask yourself, how authentic and meaningful is this for council to move ahead on an initiative like this with at least the understanding that it is not fully supported by the city of Toronto?
10 seconds.
I hope we understand what we're trying to achieve. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I let the city manager come back with a report. It follows the policy, meets what we've asked him to do, or brings another option that is agreeable to everybody.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Robinson, three minutes. Do you have a question to Counselor Holiday? Clarification?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to get clarity. I think you might have said it in your last, very last line there, but just clarity on what you're proposing. Is your objective to refer it back to the city manager for further consideration on whether it's named or not named Dundas? Or is it, is your objective to have it embedded into the framework and the process that we're hearing about today and that's in the report? Is that your intent to make it not piecemeal and to put it into a broader process, embedded into a process or, you know, framework, as I said earlier?
Madam Speaker, nobody's perfect. Henry Dundas was not. Members of council are not. The city manager is not infallible in the report that he's brought forward to us. I do not believe it met the mark of what he was asked to do. I do not believe it achieved public consultation. So sending it back allows the city manager to reconsider this. Those are the words of my motion. There's many options that the city manager can do. The city manager can come and comply with the city's renaming policy, and that forces public consultation for the people that live on the street. The city manager can come back with another option. If it's not renaming a city street, there's a whole bunch of other doors and avenues that don't require the same amount of consultation. I'll lead up to the city manager. All I know, in good conscience, I looked at what we asked the city manager to do. I looked at the pieces in the report that are missing, that don't allow me to make a decision like this as a member of council without fully understanding exactly what it is that the entire public sentiment is on this. Short of literally looking at newspapers and looking to see what the comments are on that, engaging that against what people have called my office about in various polls, the public opinion poll was not conducted. So the city manager can fulfill all of those, and the city manager wants to come back with a report, that's fine. And we'll look at it and we'll understand what it is at that point in time. But I cannot, in good conscience, support this report.
Cute. So I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying, but are you also, is the overture here that you want the city manager to embed this into a process going forward, a framework that the other streets that have been identified will be part and parcel of? Is that one of your objectives? Because I understand what you're saying, but I'm not clear on that.
So I'm still on question number one. There's two pieces that are before us, of course. The first question is, and it's been summarized in the questions and the city manager confirmed it. Are we taking the name off of Dundas and proceeding on a renaming policy? And I'm at that point right now. I don't even want to advance to the next component, which could open the door to all kinds of renaming. And I mentioned that in what I said today, which was around what is the standard for renaming something? I can't even imagine how we will make it through 66 other names, whatever else shows up, without understanding how we're going to process Dundas Street first. What's before me, I do not believe has equipped us to deal with those decisions in the future, and it certainly has not equipped me as a member of council to deal with the decision that's before me.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to... We're going to be speaking on the referral for two minutes. Counselor Wong-Tam, do you have a question for Counselor Holiday, clarification of his motion?
I do, Madam Speaker. I was just hoping to ask, I think, what might be a quick question. Counselor Holiday, I think that the city manager seemed to be quite clear in his resolve that the naming of Dundas should proceed sooner rather than later. But I think also in his response to members' questions with respect to broad consultation, it may not have been as full as perhaps one would expect for an initiative this large. Is it possible for your motion to be amended, and would you consider it friendly if it was to read that city council refer the item back to the city manager for further consideration and broad public consultation? Would you consider that a friendly amendment, and would it be in order?
I'm going to leave it. I would like to see that just the way it is, referred back to the city manager. The city manager can figure out what all of the other options he has to bring something forward to council. And starting with the most basic, which is to fulfill the instructions of what the report was voted upon and agreed upon at council last year. I'm not sure I'm going to get that because of the answer specifically that the city manager gave to your questions. When you said, and I'm going to paraphrase roughly because I don't have the tape in front of me, but you said, what if a petition of a million people was brought forward?
100,000.
The city manager, I'm sorry, whatever it was, it was a big number. What if a big petition was brought forward? And again, paraphrasing his answers, I think he said, move forward with it. That doesn't even square up with the city's renaming policy. So I don't understand how the city manager can bring forward a report and say that and not adhere to the council-approved policy that was made up with very, very important tensions in it. 75% of the people on the street have to agree to it. I have to think that that was put in there for some very, very clear reasons, and that's in recognition that this is extremely important to the people that live on the street. That's a high bar. We haven't even started to tackle that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Carroll, clarification of the motion.
Call the question, Madam Speaker.
Okay, well, right now, right now, we're just asking questions to the previous speaker.
Am I not able to call the question on the referral?
We're not there yet. We're at questions.
I can't see the list. If I could be first on the list when we're speaking to this, I can't figure out how to answer that.
Okay, Counselor Carroll, hold on. We have one more member of council that wants to ask a question to the previous speaker, Deputy Mayor Minin Wong.
Yes, through you to Counselor Holiday. Counselor Holiday, you said that only about 25 people were consulted about this. How'd you get there?
The report talks about that there were 25 Black and Indigenous leaders, and I'm going by memory, and based on the conversations that I-
Sorry, I have to interject. Deputy Mayor-
On the referral?
You have to ask a question on the deferral, please.
Okay, thank you. So only 25, so you're asking for a deferral because you say not enough people have been consulted? And you want it to be deferred so that it's going to be greater consultation? How many people were consulted and how'd you get there?
So the September 8, 2020, report from the city manager says a decision to rename a major or two road like Dundas Street requires careful consideration in equitable, inclusive public process that considers Black and Indigenous perspectives as well as those of the broader community. And there are too numerous to answer right now, but I have them highlighted in front of me, several references to public consultation. That was a process that was laid out, and that was the process that was agreed to by council when this was last looked at. From what I've read in the report and all of the information and listening to questions today and on other days, it does not appear that that standard has been met. So I expect public consultation because that's what the instructions were, and that's why I do not believe that this is a complete report and it should be sent back.
Okay.
So do you think we should consult with the entire community, and that that's one of the reasons why you want the deferral, that we have obligation?
It says broader community in the report, and it says the public. It even says the public in the petition, the original petition. So yes, 97,000 people live on this street. We'd have to have some effort made to consult with them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson, question on the referral?
I guess, thank you, Speaker. Through you, just wondering, Counselor, Deputy Mayor Holiday, you referenced the 25 mostly impacted group that the staff have alluded to. I'm just wondering, where does the 14,000 names on the petition and the some 400 research that from academic research has been done? How does that actually factor with respect to your consideration for the changes that are being asked in the city manager's report?
So I think the first number that I saw was the number that was contained in the staff report that said 97,000 people that live on the street. That might be a good place to start with the consultation. Then there's the entire population of the city. You know, I think we have to be careful about petitions. Here's change.org, and there's a petition with 16,000 names, and the petition says, we want Jeff Bezos to buy the Mona Lisa and eat it. And, you know, this is not fun, you know, at petitions, or you just, you have to understand that in the digital world, these things come together very, very quickly. And they are among the things that need to be factored into the decision-making process. I believe there's an anti-petition going out there against the renaming of Dundas Street, and it's, you know, it's in the thousands of numbers. I don't have it in front of me. I don't have it queued up. But, you know, there's a whole bunch of factors that you have to be careful with this, and they're not raw data points. I would love to have had, you know, a proper public opinion survey that was contemplated in this, but it didn't come.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, speakers, on the referral, two minutes. Councillor Carroll, you wanted to be first on the list?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. To be clear what I am calling the question on, because the word "deferral" has been used, the motion that I am asking to call the question on is not a deferral with a timeframe, it is a referral with all friendly amendments having been rejected. And I'm calling the question on it right now. Thank you.
So councillor Carroll is calling the question on the referral. Shall we call the question?
Record vote, please.
Yes, recorded vote.
Standby, members, the motion is just being prepared, it'll come up in a moment.
Yeah, this is just to end the debate on the referral.
And councillor Cole, it appears to us you have not received the vote. Have you voted?
Affirmative.
Thank you.
Madam Speaker, the motion to end debate fails. The vote is 15 to 10. The vote failed to attract a two-thirds majority required by the council procedures.
Okay. Yes, so councillor Pasternak to speak on the referral, two minutes.
I'm going to reluctantly support referral because I think this report needs a sober second look. Look, I believe the name should be changed, but I was really taken aback by the way council was put into a corner and not given a number of creative options. You know, I talked about the ceremonial naming that we gave to Nelson Mandela some years ago on University Avenue circulated among a number of who are Lieutenant George Dundas, who was a World War I hero, who was decorated, who fell in battle on September 2, 1918. Certainly, it may be a shortcut, but why don't we keep things simple and name it as someone who was really, really heroic and really has a clean slate? There were just other ways of handling this. The consultation had to be wider, had to people, talk to people on the street. The research is conflicting. You know, I spoke to a police officer, told me a number of years ago when there's a car crash, and it'd be five people, all five give a different version of events, and no one's lying. It's just that they saw it, and that's 10 minutes after the crash. We're trying to judge this whole situation 200 years after the death of Henry Dundas, and it is a messy, complicated academic situation. And I think, I look at what we originally sent the city manager to do, and I just don't think that's here. I thought we were going to have various options on how to solve the problem, because clearly it does seem inappropriate to keep the name as prominent as it is. But at the same time, the war among academics and researchers is particularly disturbing. So I think-
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, councillor Pasternak, you only have two minutes to speak on the referral. Do we have any further speakers on the referral? It's two minutes. Okay, so let's vote on the referral.
Record vote, please, Madam Speaker.
Yes, recorded vote.
The vote is nine to 16.
So we'll put the list back on the screen on the report.
Just stand by, Madam Speaker, while we restore the speakers' list.
Councillor Carroll to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the easy thing to do, I have constituents who are nervous about this or disagree with this, and the easy thing to do would be to keep my head down, not speak, maybe even take a walk. I can't do that. I don't have that option. I cannot live with myself if I do. Three points. The first one, that I've explained to a number of constituents, this is not a founding father. We really can't separate this out from names on that other list, from other processes, because this is not a founding father. He never set foot in Canada, and we know that. That's in the report, and it's factual. It's very factual. His life is documented. So we know that. There's no dilemma there. It's not the same as Ryerson or Sir John A. McDonald or any of the rest. There's also no gray area as to this person's efforts to delay abolition. There are parliamentary records. We don't even need to worry about historical writers, because it's right there in the parliamentary record. William Wilberforce, the MP, moved the motion, the bill, every year from 1792 to 1799 to start abolition and to do it now. And this person, whose name we want to take off this street, blocked it every one of those years, and even after, after a lot of falls are all about, we need graceful procedure and a smoke and mirrors show of let's do this gradually for economic reasons and all the rest, and then it'll be done by 1800, he continued to delay, even after Mr. Wilberforce had no ability to put that bill on the floor. He still delayed it until 1807. And so there really isn't any gray area here. We all engage in smoke and mirrors when we're nervous about something. I think we maybe just did it. That's what you do in politics. And then the record shows what your real strategy and actions were. Our record will show when this debate is done. And lastly, I'm just asking people to try and put themselves in the shoes of the black community that is watching us today. There's only one councillor who doesn't have to imagine it. But I want you to imagine that you've lived a life in which, the age of 10 or 11, maybe even earlier, maybe seven, maybe kindergarten because your sibling told you, you've lived a life in which you know fundamentally, intrinsically, you know that you are just lucky to have been born in a certain year, and if you had been born in another certain year, you could be stolen, you could be sold as chattel, and then you could be tortured into submission, and then you could be worked to an early death, and ripped apart from your family, and all manner of horrors. And you grow up knowing that. It's in your DNA. And imagine now, you're sitting watching this council session, and someone who allowed that to continue to happen for 15 years, we have to keep doing because we don't want to inconvenience a large number of businesses? Well, I think that debate has happened again and again and again, from 1968 to as recently as the end of '29. Every time in the United States, they have taken a long boulevard, often named after a Confederate general, and renamed it Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. They never picked short streets, they always picked the big ones, and lots of people were inconvenienced. You can actually look up those who voted against. They don't fare well afterwards. This is something that people need deeply. This is about a very deep pain, and people need this. And it's quite different from other things. Councillor Fletcher, long ago, when this debate first started, brought up our own Aboriginal peoples, our First Nations pain, and we know we have to deal with that. We've been unanimous about this. To now say for the black community that this is somehow gray area and we can't inconvenience anybody, I'm sorry, I don't buy it. I can't live with myself, and I can't go home and look at my grandchildren if I don't do this today. And I hope you'll join me, I hope you'll join the mayor, that the research is why this supported this was instantaneous. And lastly, I'm kind of glad to see that Deputy Mayor Thompson-
15 seconds.
-is towards the end of this list, because I hope that he will wrap up and commit you to this fantastic action. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Councillor Bradburn to speak.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. You know, as a councillor with part of Dundas running through the ward, I thought it was important for me to offer a few comments. Now, this proposal comes at a time when we are doing very critical and difficult work to rebuild our city. And as we start to reopen, as we focus on the recovery, as we focus on moving out of this pandemic, we cannot turn our backs on the need for truth and reconciliation, for justice, and for a more equitable future. I think with all big, bold transformational projects, this work does need to be done in a thoughtful way, with the right input from everyone who's impacted. But in this case, that means placing the voices of those who have been marginalized for far too long at the center of the conversation. And I think when we're talking about Henry Dundas, knowing what we know today, councillor Carroll just provided a very good summary and outline, we need to focus and emphasize those communities who have been directly impacted by the views and policies that Henry Dundas brought forward in that era. Now, we live in a big city with nearly 3 million people. Everybody has an opinion, everybody has a view, but not everybody gets to make the decisions. And we are actually here in the position, as councillors, as elected officials, to make those decisions and to make that change. I think it's incumbent upon us to listen to those who have been most impacted, to those who have expressed pain, and try our best to make it right today. I think that's where the start of this consultation was focused, and where we will have more consultation and discussion, as our city manager has outlined, going forward. Every council meeting, we come together to tackle challenging problems, very complex problems, and often involving different levels of government. We're always talking about different levels of government, trying to work through these things together. But fundamentally, when it comes to talking about renaming streets, when it talks, when we're talking about renaming our public spaces, that rests with us, that rests solely with the city of Toronto here. And I think we take up that challenge, I think we can figure it out, and I think we can move this forward today. These initial recommendations are an important step for us as a city in coming to terms with our past, and it's a reminder on-
Councillor Bradburn, we can't hear you.
How we can make good? Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Oh, I see, I'm spinning. The point I was making was the details and the facts that staff have emphasized is a critical part of moving this framework forward as we continue to have these challenging conversations. I think that the scope and the length of Dundas is also why it's crucial to take on this renaming, because it's a part of our daily commutes, it's a part of the tourist center of our city, and because it traverses the border of Toronto from east to west. And when we know what we know now, you just have to ask the question, does it make sense to name streets and plazas and transit stations after someone with a disputed, controversial, emblematic past? And for me, the answer is pretty clearly no, and I don't think that we need to delay on that. We have a lot of work to do when it comes to confronting and correcting systemic racism, and admittedly, this is a small step, but I think it's a step that we have to take forward with today. I will just conclude by acknowledging, we of course cannot change the past, but we do have an opportunity here to start acting on what we have learned and heard from people and communities who have been most impacted by those histories. And I think that we can put ourselves on a better course going forward, and most importantly, we can bring our present and future closer to the values and the principles that our city manager was talking about in which we aspire. Because that aspirational belief is characteristic of Torontonians, and I think it is what will keep us moving forward through the important work and details on this file in the days ahead. Back over to you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Councillor Cole?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak. You know, certainly, this is not an easy thing to do. There's a lot of aggravation here, there's a lot of work, there's a lot of inconvenience, there's a lot of cost to this, and this is one of the reasons why people are concerned about this change that's going to take place. But, you know, whether it's the cost or the inconvenience, it's miniscule in comparison to what this represents. This represents an opportunity for us as a city to say that we stand with those people who, you know, operated the Underground Railroad here, right here in Toronto. Torontonians, the Shad family, you know, the Prince family operated the Underground Railroad where we harbored Americans that were enslaved south of the border, that swam across the Niagara River, swam for safety, risked their lives, walked for 1,000 miles to come to Canada. We gave them a home here in Canada. So we have played a good role, but we were no means perfect in Canada, because, you know, there was slavery in Canada. You know, a good friend of mine, Dr. Afua Kuper, wrote a book called The Hanging Evangelique, which I all recommend for you to read, what happened to this poor young girl in Montreal that was hung because she was blamed for the great fire of Montreal, and she was a slave, and that's why she was hung. So Canada also has, you know, blood on their hands, too. But, you know, this Henry Dundas prolonged slavery, you know, opposing Wilberforce's attempt to end slavery, prolonged it for, you know, 15 years, resulting in over another half a million innocent men and women being dragged over in chains in boats. Many of them died in these boats, cattle boats, all the way from Africa to the Americas and beyond. Many of these ships even sank with people chained in these boats, these cattle boats. So, you know, I always ask myself, you know, if I lived during the Holocaust, when Hitler did what he did, what would I have done? What would I have said? I'm asking myself now. We should all be asking ourselves, what would we have done if we lived during the time of slavery in Europe or in Canada, the United States? Would we have acquiesced and gone along with it, as unfortunately and disgracefully, most governments did? They acquiesced in this barbaric act of enslaving individuals because of the color of their skin. And enslavement was by no means something that was in any way acceptable in some form of indentured servant. These people were beaten, hung, and the remnants of that slavery still goes on during the Jim Crow days in the United States. It's still going on in the United States today, and then what is happening in the deep south, and the Americans are finally coming to grips with it. So, sorry about the inconvenience, sorry about the cost, there's no damn way I'm going to say that it's okay to name a major street in Toronto after this person that represents not only those who basically promoted slavery, but continued it. So at the least we can do is change the name of this damn street. That's what I say. Change it, and change it right away. Thank you.
Councillor Fletcher?
Well, thank you, Speaker. I hope I won't take too long. I too, as councillor Bradford, have Dundas ends at Kingston Road, he has a section, and I have a large section from the bridge over the river all the way to Coxwell. And along that stretch, there is the Dundas School, there's the Dundas Parket, and there, of course, is Dundas. But really and truly, I very strongly support changing the name. The history of the East End is very interesting, a lot of it is buried. Logan and Queen was a station on the Underground Railroad. It is where many, many enslaved, formerly enslaved people came to settle. Mary Anne Shadd lived in the East End. There are, we're uncovering history of those who escaped their chains and came to Toronto seeking freedom, set up their businesses, and of course, we have the Blackburn Street just off of Dundas Street. We have a lot of interesting things, we're uncovering that and daylighting it. Just as we daylight increase, we are daylighting the strong anti-slavery history of our part of the world, of our part of the city. And I think it's very exciting to do that. We have put a plaque at Queen and Logan, it's part of a new development. But these are very small things compared to a large street named after someone who very much, as everyone eloquently said, was part of keeping the slave trade in place. And so, I do think it's incumbent upon us now to review that and look at that. And I agree with Councillor Cole, I would like to change the name of Dundas Park right away. I would like to change the name of Dundas Square. It's a city square right at a major corner, and it is bearing that name and will continue to bear that name. Sometimes you just have to pull the Band-Aid off and do things quickly. We truly are at that moment of our truth and reconciliation, and we're finding that here, after the death of George Floyd, after the murder of George Floyd, and having so many people speak to us, our constituents, as to what we need to do to make our reparations, to reconcile. And one of those very big things is renaming Dundas Street. So, you know, we have a black mayor, William Peyton Hubbard. He established Toronto Hydro as a public body. He is a true municipal hero. And until 2014, thirteen, we didn't even have something major named after him, until the park in front of the Bridgepoint Hospital was named the William Peyton Hubbard Park. So I think we need to turn things on its head. We need to be finding how we're going to reconcile our history, how we're going to take out those who were part of the colonial past and restricting freedoms, supporting slavery, creating residential schools, advocating that they were great, denigrating Indigenous citizens. That's the moment of history that we're living in, and it's very hurtful to find so many councillors whose streets have nothing to do with Dundas Street, nothing to do with Dundas Street, still committed not to have that name changed because they seem to be ideologically aligned in some way that we can't make that change. That is not the right thing to do. It is the right thing to do. To go faster is the right thing to do, to make some quick changes is the right thing to do. And years ago, somebody wanted to name Dundas Parket after Fran Endicott, who was a curriculum leader at the school board, or the old Toronto Board of Education, who developed all the anti-racism curriculum there. And that hasn't happened. I'm putting it on the record, that is my goal, the Fran Endicott Park. And my goal is to change Dundas Square to something that truly, truly reflects-
Ten seconds.
-who we are in our city in 2021. Thank you.
Cute. Councillor Thompson to speak?
Very much, Madam Speaker, I have a motion. I'd like to ask the third before please. There's a technical component of the motion that staff have asked me to move forward relating to Freeman Redmond Circle. The, so the first three items are related to that. The fourth one is the one that I've actually put forward, which is City Council requires the city manager to work with proposed Community Advisory Committee to consider renaming different names for Old Dundas Street, Dundas Square, and various civic assets currently named for Dundas to reflect Toronto's rich culture, heritage, and diversity. Madam Speaker, we have heard through the comments that this is a very difficult decision for many. It's a difficult conversation to be had for many. It's not a very difficult decision and/or conversation for blacks and Indigenous members of community, because in fact, they have lived and have continued to have the vast experience of the treatment of slavery, of the residential schools and other atrocities that have been committed against them. We know that Henry Dundas was a very clever politician. Obviously, it's proven based on the historical information that we have received. I listened intently to Dr. Stephen Mullin and what he had to say. I asked him questions about how, in fact, even Dundas's name has been handled in Scotland. And I was very, you know, not surprised, I guess, or very pleased in essence to get the information from him, because it reflects his desire for people there as well, where his birthplace, to address the atrocities, in my view, that he has caused so many people. He has impacted the lives, we've heard from the city manager, of some 600,000 men, women, and children who were black, and there are a lot of people who are saying, no, don't change it because it costs too much, don't change it because of a variety of things, because they don't understand, they don't know the history. It may be inconvenient to them, but just think about the situation for blacks and Indigenous members of our community. We have lived the experience. Canada has had slavery for over 200- In this city, when we talk about equity, we talk about diversity, we talk about inclusion, we must also add justice to this piece, because it is the right thing to do. It's the justice aspect that we also have to incorporate in the decision that we are about to make here today. There has been a tremendous amount of lobbying. I spoke just yesterday with the representative from the Black Business and Professional Association, and they had to actually turn our block numbers from families associated with Henry Dundas, who have been calling and compelling them to remove their letters of support that's been sent to the city council. This is the ultimate aspect of privilege, the view that suggests that you can just call this group and tell them what you want to do. I think so many. And at the same time, I forgot, Madam Speaker, to thank the city manager. In particular, I want to thank Ms. Blackman, Ms. Cheryl Blackman, that woman that was referred to today, who was the Acting General Manager of Economic Development, who happens to be the person who had the lead on this and has done a fantastic job in terms of bringing all of this information forward.
Councillor Thompson, we can't hear you.
Speaker, we are- Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
But history will remember not so much what it cost us to change the name, but it will remember us whether or not we actually take the right action. Our reputation is on the line. We can't continue to say- Look back at our history and change it for a better future. Thank you, Speaker.
Cute.
Questions of the mover?
Okay, Deputy Mayor Minwan, question on his motion. We'll put the motion on the screen.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's clarification of the motion, Madam Chair. So, I believe, and I did just check, I think I brought this right. The staff recommendations were amended in terms of the renaming process, and it added not just the, this committee that was struck, but it also added and representatives of diverse communities. Because on Dundas Street, I mean, there's so many different Asian groups. You just go outside of City Hall, there's Chinese, Vietnamese, Portuguese, Italian. Does your motion in terms of setting up, I mean, I think some of your motions speak to, you know, renaming the street and the square and all those things, does it include those diverse communities?
Yes.
But is it included in the motion?
In fact, there was a motion, Councillor, where you were not at the executive committee. In fact, I believe it was the mayor who actually moved that motion.
He did.
But that's right, so it does, yes, it does, yes. It includes all Toronto.
Does your motion in any way conflict with the mayor's amendment?
No.
And with regard to any of the other assets, like the square or anything else named Dundas, it doesn't conflict with, we're still going to include diverse communities?
Councillor, we have an opportunity to engage everyone in the city-
Yes.
-as part of this process, so the answer is yes, yes.
So we're not going to exclude those groups?
Councillor, it is not my intention or my suggestion that we exclude anyone. In fact, what I have said and supported is the inclusionary aspect to ensure that we're all part of this process. The fact that we are going to change the name doesn't prohibit others from being involved in terms of how we plan for future, in terms of the name that we want to, whether or not it's Dundas Square. In fact, I was going to be, I was going to propose that, Councillor, that we look at Anting and Best Square, Oscar Peterson Square, and a number of others. But I'm just going to leave that at this point.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, for letting me get that clarified.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Perutzha, question, clarification of the motion? Councillor Perutzha? Okay. Councillor Wong Tam to speak?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, I do have a motion. I hope that it's ready. Fantastic, thank you. My motion is to amend recommendation number two, so therefore the Community Advisory Committee becomes even broader by including the business improvement areas and residence associations. There have been a few letters that have been written and submitted to this item on the communication docket that specifically asks for their participation, as well as to, as well as to add an initial further motion that should this process be adopted, that the city manager develop a full cost recovery for any of the businesses that may be affected because of the rebranding or renaming of the street. And then third is that City Council expresses desire to further advance racial and social justice as identified in the Recognition Review Project update in response to the Dundas Street renaming petition, and direct the city manager to report to the executive committee and through the 2022 budget process with a comprehensive list of programs, services, and policies which council has previously adopted and endorsed, which remain currently underfunded and unfunded, but necessary to ensure community health, social well-being, and prosperity of equity-seeking groups and people living with vulnerabilities. Madam Speaker, this is a very important debate. It has been a really instructive and constructive conversation. I recognize that there are probably 25, 26 different opinions on council. I think what I'm drawing from this, from the comments today is that everybody is in recognition that Dundas, you know, was a character and a historical figure that had zero connections to Canada, never but stepped foot in this country, and probably has no idea of who lived in this country and the effects that his legacy abroad had here. So I have no emotional connections to this person. However, the actions that he has undertaken in delaying the abolition of slavery certainly is something I take great offense to. And I don't think it can be as simple as that we judge people based on the character of and actions against the time that they were in. I think that there are extraordinary thinkers and there are extraordinary leaders that can rise above that moment in time. And I think that Dundas seemed to have failed that particular test. I want to recognize that there are probably many people who are outside this chamber who may not be paying attention to this debate, and I just want to make sure that those individuals who may be caught by surprise, I don't want to take that away from them, because they certainly have the right to have those feelings. But I hope that they can understand that this report is one that symbolizes how council should proceed. So we're left with a choice to proceed or not to proceed, and that's really the only vote that's before us today. And I hope that we can choose to proceed. I also hope that we can choose to make whole those businesses and affected residents if we need to compensate them, because renaming the street, having to rebrand their business, having to incur certain costs that they may not have been anticipating at the end of a very difficult pandemic, and we're not out of it as of yet, I don't think any of us would want them to wear that cost on their own. And I know that certainly they're not going to be wanting to wear that cost. They're going to want us to compensate them. And I think that if we compensate the businesses who are affected by the Dundas naming, I think that we should be compensating all the individuals who are affected by all future namings if that comes forward. The other thing I want to highlight is motion number three, the last motion of mine. There have been over this time at council all sorts of policies, programs that council has said that they wanted to adopt, they were willing to support, and we never ever funded it. And Madam Speaker, I cannot tell you how interesting it is. I will look forward to seeing who votes for this motion, because this is going to be putting it to the test. If we support racial justice and social justice-
Ten seconds.
-and equity-seeking groups, then we're going to have to reconcile that in the 2022 budget as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Pasternak?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. And certainly when it comes to one of the toughest pieces before us in 11 years I've been to City Hall, this ranks right up at the top. You know, I've been called to jury pool a couple of times, and one time they walked us into the courtroom where we were supposed to be interviewed. And I had my responses to get out of jury pool, because I was an elected official. But I looked over and I saw these four young people being charged with murder, and I thought, oh my gosh, if I ever get on this jury, oh, well, there'll be the back and forth of evidence. And you know, in a way, this, I looked at this discussion and this debate very seriously, plowing through the information and the debate, going back and forth. And I must admit that should I be on a jury on Henry Dundas's trial for crimes against humanity, or hate crimes, whatever the case may be, I would probably be the runaway jury. I don't know whether I could convict him, and that's my big problem here. We're trying to piece together events of over 200 years ago. While the events of that time were abhorrent, were disgraceful, and were embarrassed, you know, that that actually occurred in this hemisphere, in North America, is really what's really disturbing us. But you know, when I worked as a school board trustee to bring in the Afrocentric School, it was a big cost to that, and the black community won that. And, you know, I felt it would produce long-term tangible results. And when those same activists called me years later and said, would you bring in a street naming, major street naming for Nelson Mandela, I took it on as well. And we wanted University Avenue, New York Queen Street, but we did a ceremonial dedication instead. And I followed the same philosophy when I started the youth labs, which were more about when I was on community development and recreation. And of course, starting our priority centers, which, of course, restarted the whole process with the Intibis Community Center. Over the years, I've had the chance to visit two sites in particular where horrible things happened. One was Dachau, which is a concentration camp of Munich, where millions died during the Holocaust. And when you walk through there, there is unspeakable horror that comes from the ground. Everyone's silent, you can't believe that humanity behaved in that way. A shameful, disgraceful piece of history. And I was at another place called Monticello. And this is where Thomas, former US President Thomas Jefferson, lived most of his life after he left office. And they gave us a whole tour, and he owned slaves. And they were not, they were not shocked about it, they did not cover it up. They were very open about it. They showed us the slave quarters, they gave us the history of it, learnt about it, and I was pretty appalled. And in both these sites, there is a temptation, there is a temptation to burn them down, to wipe them out, to change their names. And then I thought, you know what, well, that teaches, how well that teaches. You know, I don't go to Dundas Square very often. I actually was there recently, I got swarmed by a bunch of pigeons. But I am there for a very special event run by Canadian friends of Simon Wysenthal, and it's called Freedom Day. And thousands and thousands of students come there to celebrate freedom. And there's all kinds of speakers from all kinds of racialized groups, people who came from, you know, countries where human rights were violated. I remember a child soldier spoke as well. And you know, I'm thinking now, if these kids were to go back to the classroom and their teachers were to say, you know this Henry Dundas, did you see that plaque there? You know, he's a controversial figure, there were deep debates about his legacy. He defended blacks, he delayed slavery, he caused deaths, he saved people's lives. This is a terrible debate.
Fifteen seconds.
A torn debate. But you know what, they would learn. We would learn from Dachau, we would learn from Monticello, and we would learn from Dundas Square. And I thought there was a better way of handling this, where we could educate our kids about the future. And it's just not here in this report.
Thank you. Councillor McElvee to speak?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the executive committee, I asked questions of staff. I didn't re-ask the questions today, because I had the answers, but I do want to share what they told me. I did ask about businesses that want to rename their names, but may not have the funds, you know, would their names still be recognized by Google Maps? And the answer was yes. Or if somebody mailed it to the old address, would it still arrive? And the answer was yes. So it's clear that businesses have time to change their name, and they can change their letterhead, and they can change their letters as it has to be renewed. But the other thing that I asked is, I also asked, if you want to know a moral compass, you know, talk to kids, ask them what they think. So I asked my daughter, and I said, do you think the street should be named after him? And she said, well, you know, he didn't do anything good for Canada. And, you know, it's offensive to the people that he hurt. And I said, well, what if I told you it's going to cost a lot of money? And it, you know, it just came down to what is the right thing to do? And I think that's the question we need to ask ourselves, what is the right thing to do? And if you want to know, ask the next generation, because they have that moral compass and they can tell you what the right thing to do is. And we had a teacher that spoke at executive as well, and spoke about the discussion she'd had with her classroom. And again, the kids knew, this is the right thing to do. And so based on that, you know, I'm prepared to recognize this is the right thing to do and to vote accordingly to that today. I also, though, am worried that we need to develop a process, and we need to develop a process for looking at other names. And in my community, I have Landevan, and we know that he is one of the people that are behind the residential school system. And so again, here's somebody that shouldn't have that honor, and we need to have a look back and recognize that. And again, I look at that as I look to my children and I talk to them, and I talk to them about their great-grandmother, who was an Indigenous orphan, and she lost her heritage, and she lost her culture. And as a result, we don't have the Indigenous knowledge of our ancestors. We don't get to look at the world with that viewpoint. And so there's a lot that was lost by her being raised through that system. So I'd like to thank, you know, everybody that worked on this today. I'd also like to thank the deputy mayor for being so well-spoken in showing us the right way here and showing us what the right thing is to do.
Thank you. House Speaker, Mayor Tory.
Madam Speaker, thank you. This is a very important moment. We all think about these things very carefully. I think about them perhaps from a different perspective, because I have the citywide responsibility to all of the voters of the entire city. And I look especially carefully for opportunities to take away pain, to take away pain, to take away instances where people don't feel included in a city where we are the most diverse city in the world, as Councillor Cressy said a long time ago in this to me, but striving to be the most inclusive city in the world. And I take, look for opportunities to try and promote inclusion whenever that's possible to do. And I'm reminded in this instance, and I was from the beginning when this report came forward, and I didn't know what it was going to recommend, I had no inside knowledge of that, that you can never go wrong doing the right thing. Because I've had the same controversy that has been, you know, felt by other people in their offices through email and otherwise, with people calling me and people I know well that have called this question and my own position on it. But you can never go wrong doing the right thing. And another question that I would pose as we sort of conclude this debate is, if we were looking at this person with his complete lack of connection, in fact, when you listen to the historians talk about him at the executive committee and otherwise, the only connection that people could draw, the only reason why anything was named after him was that he was John Graves Simcoe's boss, and that John Graves Simcoe was going around naming things after Mr. Dundas to curry favor with his boss. No one else could identify a single connection, a single visit, a single anything that he ever did that had anything to do with Toronto. And if you then add, that's a minor factor, but if you then add to that what we've heard the clear consensus of historians said about the stance he did take and the things he did do to delay the abolition of slavery, a clear consensus, not unanimity, but a clear consensus. You have to ask yourself, we were sitting here today, looking at figures in the history of this city and of this country, would there be any chance whatsoever that you would even consider for a minute naming one of our most major streets after this man? And I think the answer to that is a resounding no. And so, you know, you look at that consensus, and the broad consensus says that Mr. Dundas played a direct role in postponing for years the abolition of slavery with all the trauma and pain that caused not only to people back in that time, and we've heard it hundreds of thousands, but also the intergenerational trauma. Because I come to understand in a very real way, with a number of groups that are in our population today here in this diverse city, how that intergenerational pain is a reality for them in many different respects. So the broad consensus is there, and I think if you then take the combination of the realities of history as the broad consensus finds them to be, and it's not really been known to people explicitly before now, I would argue, there wasn't much discussion. When this first came up and the petition started up, I didn't even know there was Mr. Dundas. I had no idea where the name would come from. I just didn't, I don't fault myself for that, I mean, I think a lot of people did. If you add that to the realities of today, when we would definitely not choose to honor someone who had been engaged in this kind of activity as a member of parliament, I mean, the very fact, with no disrespect, that Deputy Mayor Holliday could cite two little tiny phrases that seem to suggest maybe that at one time he'd spoken a word in parliament about his siding with the abolitionists, to me, is not a very strong record in terms of indicating that what has been said about him by the broad consensus of historians, in fact, is true. So if you combine the realities of today with that history, and then you add to that how we see ourselves today, who are we? What kind of statement do we want to make about ourselves and about the people who make up this city and about the values that we espouse to ourselves and to the rest of the world, and how the rest of the world sees us for that matter? They admire us for the fact that we are people trying with a lot of flaws and a lot of work left to be done to do things differently. And we're far from perfect, and we've got a lot of work left to be done. But, you know, we are trying to establish a different way here, and I think it is what has attracted so many people to come here. I say this all the time when I'm out pitching for people to invest here, is to say there's a way of life here, there's a set of foundational values that we share together that are important to us. And you have to ask yourself, if you combine all of those things, history, the present-day circumstances, the how and how we see ourselves and how the world sees us, do we really want to make sure we are going to try to be the world's most inclusive city? And I think if you look at all of that, you come to the inescapable conclusion, as I did,